Good evening and welcome to the open session of the November 17th Select Board Meeting. We're now done with our executive session and back into open session. I ask that you stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Our next item is public comment. Is there anyone here for public comment? All friendly faces. I don't need you.
No, you're good.
We'll head into new business now. So, Item A is a public hearing in accordance with the General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 56, as amended to determine the percentage of local tax levy which will be borne by each class of real and personal property relative to setting to the fiscal year 26 tax rate. So, in other words, it's our favorite night of the year where we will hand it over to Bill.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for having me here.
It goes up to you. You can open the public hearing either before he present or you can open it up after he presents. It doesn't matter either way.
Okay. I'll take a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now we can go.
Okay. Well, thank you for having me here tonight. I think this is important to take a look at how we're going to decide the burden of taxes upon the classes, and so that's what we'll go over tonight. I always like to add a couple slides just to educate the public and the board on a few different things. And, but first, going into this, I always like to look over the steps on how we got here tonight. And here you can see on the screen that the first thing we do each year, in fact, we're about to enter that time of year now for next year, would be to determine the property tax levy to run the town next year. And so, we did that a year ago. We've determined that that is $107 million that needs to be raised by property taxes. We'll get to how we came to that number in a minute. Then after that step is done, during that same timeframe, the assessor is working on tabulating valuations for the entire, all the properties in the town, and that is technically at about $8.8 billion. And then we tabulate those assessed valuations by class and classify those properties. So, what I did this year, just to add a little bit about valuations, is how the assessor does value properties this year, actually every year, but this year, just to go over it a little bit, it's going to sound a little technical, but I think it's important so people understand it. When we're out there inspecting properties, one of the main reasons we go out and inspect properties is to get the data correct, because it's important, as you look at this tabulated sheet here, we look at that last column to your right. You'll see the abbreviation ASR, or it's considered an Assessment to Sales Ratio Study. And what happens is, we're in fiscal year 26 right now. That date of assessment was January 1st, 2025, for the beginning of fiscal '26, which starts in July 1st, '26, I mean '25. So, essentially, it's no different than an appraiser coming and looking at your property on that valuation date, January 1st, 2025, to look at all the sales that happened prior to that date. So, for this year, we're looking at sales that happened between January 1st of '24 to December 31st of '24. That's important to note, because everybody thinks that the assessed value is always lower than what market value is. Well, realistically, it's just the timing of it. We are actually one year behind the market by the time you get your tax bill, and that's kind of what I want to show here. And when we do that, these are all of the Assessment to Sales ratios prior to us changing any of the tabulations. So, you can see here, basically, we are assessing properties at anywhere from 16% to 20% under the value before we start valuing. And these could be outliers. Now, this is the lowest section of that. With that being said, there are certain statistical standards that we have to meet by the Department of Revenue. Here, we're going to talk about a few, but we look at the whole single-family class, which is highlighted in yellow here at the bottom of the sheet. This is the median Assessment to Sale Ratio. We arrived at a .94, which means we're about 6% under market value this year by the time our assessments were completed and valuations have been changed. We're required to be between .90 and 1.10, which is within 10% of fair market value. Why do we select a .94 ratio? It's because we're not really sure where the market's going to go next year. We'd rather be conservative. If we go right to a 1.00 Assessment to Sale Ratio and the market drops, then our values are going to be a little bit higher than what people would get. So, it's better to be a little bit conservative where we don't know where the market's going. A couple of the other scenarios you see there is a COD, or Coefficient of Dispersion. That measures variance from the middle of the segment, and then a price-related differential measures progressivity or regressivity in the market, lower-priced homes versus higher-priced homes. It's a little bit of fancy talk, but these are some of the standards we have to meet with the Department of Revenue, and so that's an idea of what we're, where we arrived at this point in time. We also, not to bore you with details, but when we look at the overall class of properties, we always break it down into other stratifications, such as by neighborhood, which you see on your left-hand side of your screen. And then on your right-hand side of the screen, we also break it down by the style of home. We'll break it down by age, by size, and then by sale price quartiles. So, there's a lot of statistical standards we have to meet from an assessment standpoint to get the approvals done by the Department of Revenue. So, essentially, my whole point of going over these last three slides quickly from an overview is because we constantly are asked, you know, we're out there to raise taxes for the community. I know why you're here. You know, you just want more taxes, and that's really not the case. The assessor's job is not to raise more taxes for the town, but it's to value you equitably and fairly with your neighbor and with the rest of the community, and if we're not out there inspecting sales, then that could cause a disparity in all of our valuations. So, I just wanted to go over that as something new this year to make sure that people kind of understand and educate on why the assessor is out there. Once we obtain those values and we go through our certification, we completed that on October 10th this year. We did get certification of values. We also did obtain certification for new growth. That's anything newly taxable that wasn't taxed in the previous year. That was also completed and approved by the Department of Revenue on October 10th. And then, tonight, we arrive here to present the classification options to the Select Board. And so, that's where we're at tonight. I do want to point out that our Chairman of the Board of Assessors is here, Brian Perry, in case there are any questions for the board, and then also Michelle Cohen, our Assistant Assessor, is here as well. What we're going to do is review and discuss the tax classification options tonight. We'll vote on the shift, and then after tonight's meeting, once it's voted, Dennis and the rest of the finance team will submit all the recertification and other forms for approval of the tax rate. So, that's what we're going to go over tonight. One of the things I like to show here is the difference in valuations from last year to this year, and what you'll see here is this particular one here, the description column. You'll see that. That's basically describing the type of property, and then over here, this highlighted column is the assessed valuation difference. And so, realistically, when we look at these, these could be the assessed value differences. It looks like the single-family overall went up about 2.8%, condominiums almost 4%, et cetera. One of the things I will be cautious of is you can see here, this negative 3%, that doesn't really indicate a valuation change in land, because we're only looking at 313 properties, and that could simply be because two of those properties went away, and so you're seeing a valuation difference there. So, not to be confused with the single-family, where it's more consistent of what properties did. And so, when we look at the last part of the sheet, one of the, one of the main differences we see here is this, this big change here, and that's typically because we had 432 personal property accounts or business accounts. This year, we have 507. So, that's quite a bit of difference in business accounts that were picked up this year over last year, and the addition of the Amazon personal property was really huge, which we'll go over in a few minutes here. But that's the main, big change this year. And so, overall, you see down at the bottom of the screen here, the total valuation change from last year to this year is about 6%, and that's important to note as we move forward with our tax impact studies. For instance, when you look at the values per class, last year in FY '25, you can see that the residential class made up about 84.17% of the value of the entire town. Well, since Amazon came on with their personal property, those, all of those personal property accounts, you can see that the personal property value went from 6.17% of the entire town up to 9.04%. So, that's a, that's a pretty good shift of burden from one class of properties onto the other. So, just wanted to point that out and how those differences can make a difference in the burden as well. We look at the budget breakdown. I think it's important to go over a couple terms. One is the property tax levy. We've all heard of Proposition 2.5 and what that means. Well, the property tax levy is what we're actually raising from year to year. That's the levy that's raised by taxes for the budget. In of that, you'll see the total town budget here at the top of the screen, and then how that's, what that's made up of. We have state aid, we have local receipts, we have enterprise funds like water and sewer, other revenues, including free cash, and also the CPA. So, those are the other forms or sources of revenue for the town, and you can see that about 65% of that entire budget is raised from property taxes. So, that's our main revenue source when we're talking about the levy. Couple other terms you might hear tonight is levy limit. That is the amount that we're allowed to raise based on last year's levy, 2.5% plus any new growth. Then we have maximum allowable levy. The difference between levy limit and maximum allowable levy is if we voted any 2.5 override or debt exclusion allows you to go up a little bit further. And then we have levy ceiling. Hopefully, we're never going to be at the levy ceiling. That's at 2.5% of the entire town's value, or $25 per thousand if we had a single tax rate. That is the maximum amount that we're allowed, override or not, what we can raise for taxes. So, over here on the right-hand side of the screen, what you'll see is how we calculate that levy limit. It is last year's levy. We add the 2.5% plus any new growth. Again, the growth figure added a lot of taxable ability for us this year, which was not expected. We'll get into that in a second. That allows us to raise about $112 million, and then you can see down here, we add this little bit of debt exclusion of the $68,000, and it gives us a little bit more room or allowable levy. So, our maximum allowable levy this year is $112,516.64. With that being said, this is where we're at. So, we determined the total town budget, we'll bring it all together, is this $165 million. Of that, we subtract out all of those other revenue sources, which is state aid, local receipts, et cetera, and we're left with this tax levy amount that we need to raise by property taxes. What we do at that point is then we take all of the tabulated assessments for the entire town, and we're going to just do simple math here. It's the total estimated levy divided by the value of the town, and if we had a single rate, that's what it would be. So, the tax rate here essentially sets itself. What we're more concerned with is where we're at budget-wise and then where we're at value-wise, and that essentially sets the tax rate. So, I know a lot of people focus on the tax rate being lower or higher. It doesn't really mean a whole lot. It means that what has the budget done, what has the valuations done? So, that's also important to note. And so, what you see here, I'm going to show you on the next few slides here, is this shift range. If everybody just, if we were at a shift of 1, which means everybody's going to pay 100% of their valuation of their property, this is what the tax rate would be, would be $12.12 per thousand. So, let's look at that for a second. If we, if we were at a shift of 1, which we're not, we've historically been at a 1.32, this is what the percentage of the valuations of each segment would pay. So, if we were at a shift of 1, residential makes up at 81.5% of that levy. If we then shifted further to the maximum shift of 1.5, you can see what happens here with the residential properties. They go from 81.5% of the levy down to 72.24. But, in essence, we go from a 9% of the levy on the personal property up to 13%. So, although a small shift in residential is a drastic shift in CIP. So, we've got to be careful on, you know, where you determine that shift to be. And then these right here are the corresponding tax rates, for instance. This year, we're at $11.26 per thousand. The CIP is at $15.82. So, if we went to a maximum shift, this is where the tax rate would end up. Here are the options. I know this is very dizzy-looking, but if you focus on these two columns here, that is the residential shift or the CIP shift, and then these are the corresponding tax rates depending upon how you shift those rates. So, you can see here again, this is that, that valuation or that shift of 1 is at $12.12. If we go up to a 1.1 shift, then you see the corresponding tax rates here. So, as we go down, this is every, every tenth of a point on these sheets, and I included these for your reference. We won't go over all of them, but you can see here what, how many options you have all the way up to a final shift of that 1.5 that we went over and the corresponding tax rates for that.
Can you say we're at 1.32 currently?
We are currently, yep. And so, here is historically where we have landed in the past 17 years. We've either been at a 1.29 all the way up to a 1.36% shift rate. Over the past five years, we have been at exactly 1.32%. And so, this is typically or historically where we've ended up, and if you decide to stay at the current shift, 1.32, you see that starred here in this column. The residential tax rate goes from 11.26 down to 11.24 per thousand. The CIP rate goes from $15.82 up to $16 per thousand. Again, those rates are determined based on valuation or percentage of budget that they make up. Couple of things to look at when you're, when you're trying to decide how to shift. You can see here, over the past five years, where we've maintained a 1.32 shift, here's valuation changes in the market. What you can see here is the gray bars represent this industrial valuation changes. You can see that that sector of the market is still very strong, warehousing, industrial market remains strong. And then down here, you can see commercial and single-family is raising, but a little bit, starting to flatten out a little bit. So, some of, some of the things that we look at when we're trying to determine some of these issues. Also important to note, to get a correct average here on these industrial values, we did not include the Amazon value, because that just skews the average, and we don't want that to, to mislead you.
But in setting the rate, we can't make a distinction between general, commercial, and industrial, right? They fall in the same bucket, correct?
Commercial, commercial is, on this previous screen, is the orange bars.
Yeah, no, but when we, when we're making the CIP shift.
Correct, yes.
Did I ask that last year?
Yes. Yep. Nobody, all goes in, it all will affect commercial and industrial and personal property equally.
Yep.
Yep.
Exactly.
So, again, here are some historic tax rates. I did add the CIP factor and the residential factor here for reference, and you can see, as I pointed out, back here in, since 2009, all the way to today, has been historically between that 1.29 and 1.36 shift. And especially here in the past five years, we've been at 1.32. And a couple of the reasons we've done that, I think, is for stability, so we can historically look back and see how these different valuations and these trends affect the impact on our taxes. For instance, when you look at the residential share, we've essentially kept the burden shifted exactly the same over the past five years. So, when you look at the valuation trends, you can see by Amazon and some of the other industrial values going up, it has dropped the percentage of share that residents bear. So, although you may want to shift or not shift onto the industry, you can see how the valuation itself just impacts that shift without you making a further shift. And conversely, if you look at the commercial, industrial, and personal property share, you can see how much more they've picked up since valuation. So, it's really reflective of the value and how much more that they are burdened with the tax levy versus the residential share. So, a couple of slides on that, but let's get down to brass tacks a little bit. Here's where we are with the average single-family tax bill, the average commercial tax bill, and the average industrial tax bill. The things you see there highlighted in red is if you stay at a 1.32% shift, this is the corresponding tax bill and what they do. You can see here, the residential tax bill does go up $237. I will note that that is the smallest increase we've had in the past five years, and that is essentially because of those valuation changes we just talked about. Personal property going up enormously this year, commercial industrial property values going up takes the burden off of the residents, and essentially, if we remain the same, you can see, see what happens there. So, the commercial industrial personal, commercial values go up about $730 in a tax bill, but the industrial factor, because you're seeing a valuation increase in that sector, plus the tax rate going up, you can see a large increase in that tax bill. That's what will happen.
And that includes Amazon or does not?
It does.
That does, okay.
Yep, absolutely does. And so, this is historically where we've been over the past five years, so determining where you want to shift, these are the corresponding tax bills and what they will do.
The increase in the industrial valuation is across the board. North Andover is not unique in that.
That's correct, yeah. That, in fact, has been designated by the Appraisal Institute for the entire state or the nation as well. That industrial factor has been huge. It's a huge growth.
What's the reasoning for that?
It's warehousing. You know, it's properties like Wayfair, Target, Amazon Distributing Facilities, FedEx, you know, all of those are, you know, we're moving into a market where everything is ordered online. You know, nobody's going into stores as much as they used to. So, that's huge warehousing, a need for product storage, a need for, you know, online business. So, that's what we're seeing.
And that actually gets the double benefit of not just the, the property valuation, but the personal property as well, right?
Exactly.
A lot of warehousing.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. If you look at some of these other shifts, you can see here, one of the things to note, as you go down in a shift, for instance, if we look at this 1.15, no matter how small or how large you decrease that shift, the residential property increase is going to be more, and then eventually, the commercial and industrial tax bills will go down depending on that shift. For instance, right here, we can see we, we land right in between a 1.30 or 1.35 shift right now. So, we're right in between raising property tax bills for the single-family residents between 1.69 or 2.88, and then correspondingly, you can see what the commercial value does or the commercial bill does and then the industrial bills do. And you can notice the differences, although we go from $169 tax bill residence up to 2.88, not a huge increase, but you can see the difference when you look at the commercial values. As you do a shift in, you know, from 1.3 to 1.35, it almost doubles their bill. So, it's a, it's a large disparity, and that's simply reflective of a smaller percentage of values, or a smaller percentage of properties that make up that valuation change. This is really where North Andover rates when we're talking about our single-family tax We rank it about 19 of 34. So, we're right in the middle of the pack pretty much of where we stand. This is last year's FY '25 average single-family tax bill. So, you can see North Andover's pretty, doing pretty well. We have, you know, excess levy capacity, we've raised our tax bills responsibly, we've seen an influx of value from Amazon personal property, but we've managed to be financially stable and keep us in the middle of the road rather than seeing the disparity amongst the rest of the communities in Essex County. So, done a good job with that. It's important to note that the Board of Assessors did meet on the 4th of November this year to discuss the valuations, the budget and tax impacts based on the residential factor. The reason we did this is because we did see a large shift in personal property valuation and how that picked up a lot of the market. We did see that the, the residents did appropriate additional money at town meeting towards the school, which was great, but we don't want to, we don't want to mistakenly say that that didn't raise their tax bills. We can see how it was a perfect storm, where we, we put more money to the schools, we're seeing the least amount of raise on property taxes we have seen in the past five years, but that's reflective more of Amazon picking up a large portion of the value. So, you know, it, it worked out well for us, I can say that. You know, I was going into this year, I was a little skeptical, wondering where those tax bills would end up, honestly, but pleasantly surprised when Amazon came out, you know, much larger than where we expected them to be.
But we can't, I guess, the personal property is no guarantee year to year, and that's, that's, I think, an important point for, to bring up.
It's a real important point, and just to give you an example, last year, the personal property or inventory that Amazon had in their facility was $40 million. We expected maybe, you know, a 50% increase in that. They weren't at full capacity last year, and this year, they were. So, if you could think 50%, we'd be at 60 million. We did not expect them to be at $325 million in value on their inventory, and I don't think they did either. But that is consistent with their Charlton facility, with this facility, and some of their distributions. It's also important to note that they are a limited liability company, not a corporation, so the inventory is taxable. If they change their status, it could be different.
With regards to inventory, how is that calculated? Because they're going to seasonal fluctuations in what they have in there.
Correct.
Anyway, so how do you kind of try to find the median? I'm sure there's a science behind it.
Yeah, we have this crystal ball in my office.
Shake it.
No, it's, it's, you can't. You really can't. It's very hard, depends on the product they go through, the, the amount, you know, this, this particular distribution facility is what they call a small distribution facility. It doesn't mean that the distribution facility is small, it means that they're moving materials through there that are small, like lighters, you know, toothpaste, sneakers, you know. No, not lighters, not lighters, sorry. Not lighters, no flammable, non-flammable, sorry. I misspoke.
To your point, if they were selling $5 t-shirts out of there, and that was the majority, and then all of a sudden, their business shifts, now they're selling more electronics. The change is dramatic. Or the other way around.
But the other way around.
Or if it goes the other way around.
Absolutely.
It's not sticky at all.
We can't, yeah, we can't. There's no, like, minimum inventory they have to meet, like, none of that, like, we're, it's a very risky.
It's tough, because it's, it's, it's driven by the market.
Yeah. And if we, you know, use all of that levy capacity and their, their property valuation goes way down, then it's shifting back over to the residents.
That's the fear.
And that is a huge, I mean, that is something that's really important for people to know.
Yeah, and this is what was discussed at our Board of Assessors meeting as well. That's what we're concerned with is, this is great, this is fantastic, it really helps the town out, it helps the residents out right now, and is the reason why they're recommending the town out, it helps the residents out right now, and is the reason why they're recommending a stable shift is because, hey, let's do this one more year. I think this next year is going to tell us a lot. Last year they weren't at full capacity, this year they are, next year they'll still be at full capacity, and now we can start to track a trend hopefully.
A few years, yeah.
Try to figure out, you know, how we can be more objective in our projections.
Yeah. Because, no, you got.
I was just gonna ask, can you explain them switching to a corporation a little bit more?
Yeah, so any, any, depending upon how you are set up with the, with the Secretary of the State is how you are taxed locally. So if you are a sole proprietorship or a limited liability company, your, everything is taxable, your inventory, your furniture, your fixtures, your machinery used in the conduct of your business, so forth. As you become incorporated, then your furniture fixtures and inventory are not taxable. Now Walmart did the same thing back in 2010. They were a limited liability partnership, and they switched to a corporation. Their inventory was no longer taxable, which you can imagine in any Walmart store what that does. And so if you think about machinery used in the conduct of the business, what kind of machinery does Walmart actually have? It's pallet jacks? The shelving is considered furniture. The refrigeration is exempt, because that's exempted under the code. So a $300 million value can easily go down to 300,000. And so you can see that that would be a big impact.
Yeah, and I think it would be foolish of us to think that Amazon's not paying attention to that, because when they've got this in every community across the country, you know, we could look at this and say, great, this is a money grab, let's go for it. And they have entire departments dedicated to trying to fight tax, tax assessments.
Yeah, and I'm sure they have a very legitimate reason why they are set up like they are. They could have foreign investors, and, you know, it's better for them as a foreign investor to, to get a certain tax write-off federally versus locally, and they, I'm sure they're weighing all of that.
And it wouldn't be local, like, if Amazon changed how they are classified, it would be across the whole state at least. It's not something that is specific to.
And just a reminder, we're still at the appellate tax board with Amazon over their values in their tax bills for the last few years.
Right.
And what they could do locally, they could change strategy locally. If one community goes after, they could say, we're gonna, this is no longer gonna have these products.
They could take all that inventory out of the building.
So are you suggesting that we should probably not talk too much about this?
No, I think it's okay too. I just want to remind people that that's still in flux too. We still don't know how the ETB is going to decide and whether or not that value is going to be impacted, which could impact everything we're talking about today.
Absolutely.
Just wanted to know.
But our decision has no bearing on what's going on there.
No.
That just may have a bearing on what the result is for us.
Yes.
So with that being said, I mean, if you, if you decided to stay the course, you know, I did provide a reference slide there for you on what your vote would be tonight. And then to go over the other options, historically, you know, we've done this every year to talk about the residential exemption or the small commercial exemption. We've talked about it at length before, it doesn't really benefit the town. What it does do is shift between certain classes or among the same class, and it just, we haven't seen a benefit or any, any reason why we would adopt this in the past. So happy to talk about any of those if you have further questions on them, but didn't want to belabor this.
I'll be happy to hear you come to us and say there's a Dover exemption.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that too.
And just a reminder, you should still see if there's anybody in the public who would like to speak.
Thank you. Okay. Is there any public comment about during this opening?
Ma'am Chair, I do have a comment, and I say this every year, is, I lost my train of thought. So if you do have problems with your assessment, and you can see a blatant situation where I don't even own one of those, they have till February 1st to report it, and you cannot, and I'll say it again, you cannot miss that date, or you've missed it.
That's correct. Yeah, I tell everyone, I'm happy to explain that, that we, we stress that the most important bill that you get every single year is your January 1st tax bill. The reason behind that is because you have a new valuation based on the data that the assessors have and what the market bears for a change, along with a new tax rate that represents, you know, your burden of the levy. So each year, from January 1st to February 1st, is your right to appeal that valuation. It's important also to note, you're not appealing your taxes, you're talking about the value of your property, and that's what we're there for. So if you really do think your property is overvalued or undervalued, you certainly can visit us at the Assessors Office. We've actually had that happen, so. But yeah, we're happy to go out and inspect your property and take a look at it with you and go over any questions you have, absolutely.
Can I ask two more questions? So building on that, with the formula that you referenced earlier about, you know, the style of home, the neighborhood, is that available to the residents as well? Do they, can they check your math or see kind of how it was put together?
Not really. I tried to do like a 10,000 overview. Because it does, it's a valuation model. So when you start to get into, I'm not going to just say, hey, the capes, because then it depends on the age of your home.
Sure.
It depends on the quality or condition of your house, the number of bathrooms. So there's so many variables that each individual assessment can change based on the data or how your home is made up. It's, it's no different than a typical buyer going into your home and saying, I like this one a little bit better, it's got a little bit better quality, so I'm going to pay a little bit more for this cape than I will this one. But in standard, I'd be hap, I would be happy to go over those, you know, statistical standards that we did this year. Yeah.
And you showed a slide earlier about where we rank in the single-family tax bill compared to Essex County. Do we have the same information for commercial, industrial, in terms of where we stand?
I think I could get that, yeah, on the DLS website. I think I could.
Yeah, okay. I'm more out of curiosity, I don't think it changes anything tonight, I'm just more curious how we are competitively.
Yeah, no, that's a great question. I could certainly do that.
Would that also give us sort of the tax rate for commercial, like?
I can do, I can look those up and see where we settle with tax rate on other communities compared to us. The single-family tax bill, I think the average commercial tax bill, yeah, I think I can look all that up and get that for you.
Because I think that would be interesting, like, attractive we are.
Right. I'll put that on my notes for next year as well.
Just, just one more thing. Is it February 1st is too late? It's got to be the end of January? I just want to be clear in case somebody does have a problem.
As long as we're going to be clear, let's see where February lies this year.
Yeah, Sunday.
It's a Sunday, so we will accept applications February 2nd.
Oh, I'm glad I asked this question.
Yes, so February 2nd will be the deadline this year. You have an extra day.
And then run, right to, right to town hall.
Any other comments, questions? No?
No.
Okay.
Very nice job.
Okay.
Take a motion to close public hearing.
So move.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Another great clear job.
Thank you, yes.
That explains sometimes something that makes your head spin.
And you add something new every year, I love it.
And I'm always here for that date.
That's true.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. So item B is now to vote on the percentage of local tax levy, which will be borne by each class of real and personal property relative to the setting of the fiscal year 26 tax rate. So I will take a motion.
Ma'am Chair, I'll move the Select Board in accordance with Massachusetts laws, Chapter 40, Section 56, as amended, the percentage of local tax levy, which will be borne by each class of real and personal property relative to setting the fiscal year 2026 tax rates, and sets the residential factor at 1.32 with cor, I'm sorry.
No, it's .9273.
.9273 with a corresponding CIP shift of 1.32, pending certification of the town's annual tax recap by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue.
I'll second. Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
I do think it's important for everybody to note, like, the, there's a lot of numbers are pointed out there. You're going to see the term levy capacity again as a part, as a result of that, and I think we addressed that pretty thoroughly with Bill about why that might not be sticky or guaranteed or anything else. And I, I think the advice on keeping this level set for the year and keeping the balance to the, you know, to how it's shifted is really, really important.
We need a few more years of data before we can.
Correct, it's all still brand new.
Yeah, so, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you. Okay. Thank you for coming in. Item C, to confirm the town manager's appointment of Joseph Augusto as the Director of Youth and Recreational Services. So, yes, we can turn that over to you or?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm joined today by the current director, Rick Gorman, as well as the Director of the Human Services Division, to introduce you to Joe Augusto and welcome him to North Andover, although he does not really need a welcome because he has very familiar to North Andover. Joe is currently the Executive Director at the Merrimack Valley YMCA Lawrence, branch, which he has daily operations for the youth and teen programs, memberships, aquatics, facilities, housing, and business management. Prior to working there, he also worked as the Director of Operations at the YMCA of Greater Boston, and as the Sports and Recreation Coordinator for the JCC of Greater Boston. He went through quite the, the process to get to, in front of you today, including, how many people are on the panel? Was it a lot? Look at Carrie's face. Probably the biggest panel we've ever had.
Everybody was.
Yep, so.
Be part of this.
No, and it's been great, and really just such a collaborative process. And so this is Joe, and he will be starting, pending your confirmation, on January 5th. He'll have some overlap with Rick to be introduced to the community and kind of get to know the job, but we're very excited to welcome him.
Fantastic.
Congratulations.
Welcome, Joe. Okay. I'll take a motion.
I'll move that the Select Board confirm the town manager's appointment of Joseph Augusto as Director of Youth and Recreational Services.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just a welcome and big shoes to fill.
Big shoes to fill.
Sure, you've been told, welcome. It's a great asset to our town, we're thrilled to have you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And thank you, Rick, as you're nearing the.
Well, the retiring party's separate, right?
That one is behind us. I didn't see you.
Okay, I'm still coming, one more time to talk to Steve.
Thank you.
And you know where I'm going to go with that. But, no, we don't want to keep raising the fees, we want our kids to know how to swim.
We got it. Okay. With no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, congratulations.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you so much, Chris.
Thank you.
Very welcome.
Thank you, Carrie, for running such a wonderful process.
Here's your speech, all right?
Yes. Did you know that?
Well, you could have made me get up to the microphone and say thank you.
I know a lot.
I'll ask questions, I've had a lot of questions.
He's been through the rig.
A lot of time and effort went into this process, and thanks to everybody who was part of it, and, yeah, we're looking forward to it.
It's all good.
And again, we're very grateful to Rick over there who's.
I know, Rick has done a marvelous job. For how many years?
Excellent job.
I can't see your face, so.
38, when I was 38.
You made it to our children's senior year, so thank you.
That was the grade?
Yeah, I heard that.
That was.
With them.
I met one of the big fifth grader, I said, they're just.
Sorry, Joe, you're going to wait.
Maybe I should still stay. Oh, gosh.
Well, thank you all, appreciate it.
He's a nice boy.
Okay, you're all good?
You have a surprise.
Item D, to vote to ratify the contract between the town and AFSMI Local 2978 Professional Librarians. So we talked about this earlier, and I think we'll take a motion. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you, Rick.
Ma'am Chair, I'm with the Select Board ratify the contract between the town and AFSMI Local 2978 Professional Librarians from July 1st, 2025 to June 20th, 2028. Is that, is that the right date, June 20th or 30th?
Oh, sorry, 30th. Okay.
June 30th, 2028.
Taking 10 days away, that would be terrible.
We can't do that, we don't want to have, we want this to last as long as, all right. Sort of a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Big thanks to Carrie, yeah, thank you very much for moving this along. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Item E, a vote to ratify the contract between the town and AFSMI Local 2978, the Administrative Union.
Ma'am Chair, I'm with the Select Board ratify the contract between the town and AFSMI Local 2978 Administrative Union from July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2028.
Okay, have a motion?
A second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Thank you again. Item F, we're moving on to appointments, and I'm going to hand it over to our Appointment Subcommittee.
We have two appointments this evening, one for CPC, which will be Jennifer Whitney, who is a basically an owner's rep for Tufts University. She's got a ton of experience in construction and children in the community, in the schools, and historic, she's worked on plenty of historic projects in Boston and the surrounding area.
Big projects.
Big projects, yeah, yeah.
Tens of millions of dollars, you know, types of type construction projects.
And she was on the middle school building committee, so I think she'll be a wonderful asset to that committee. And then we have Anthony, and I'm going to screw up his last name.
Petronio?
Petronio. So he's an active member of the Senior Center. He teaches the 45s Club, which I, or to class.
I think he's actually a legend, right?
A legend, yeah.
Teaching the 45s.
Played that when I was a kid.
Yeah, so I.
It was, it's a regional card game.
I need a refresher, so maybe I'll.
Yeah, I do too.
And he's there on a daily basis and is looking to give back to the, to the Senior Center.
He's great, and everyone loves him there.
Yeah, they do. Anything else to add to?
Yeah, that's great.
So I'll take a motion, we can do them separately, so I'll take a motion for Jen Whitney.
I'll move that the Select Board appoint Jennifer Whitney to the Community Preservation Committee for a term ending June 30th, 2028.
I have a motion.
A second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'll take a motion for Anthony.
Move that the Select Board appoint Anthony Petronio as an Associate Member to the Council of Aging for a term ending June 30th, 2028.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just to say, reiterate, it's just incredible to see how many wonderful volunteers we have to sort of run our boards and committees. It's a town that's, you know, run substantially by volunteers in addition to our awesome, wonderful staff, but it's, it's overwhelming to see, you know, the, you know, willingness to volunteer from the community.
Thank you, actually, we, I don't know if we've mentioned that enough lately, though. We very much appreciate all of our volunteers.
Thank you, Mr. Doitt.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, moving on to our consent items. We'd like to accept donations to the Holiday Decorating Committee for holiday wreaths in the amount of $714. Accept donations to the Festival Committee for the Santa Parade and tree lighting in the amount of $1,825. To accept donation in the amount of $100 from Sheila Bowie to the library, and to accept a donation in the amount of $5,000 from the North Andover Farmer's Market for food insecurity.
That's nice. That's really nice.
Where did the donation to the Festival Committee come from? Do you mean?
Festival Committee, which checks they were.
Oh, are those, okay.
Yeah, it's stuff that they've collected, they've been taking donations online.
Okay.
As well as from.
Got it. Good guys, I wasn't sure this was one person, one group to thank and all that, okay, great, sorry.
Letters will be sent.
But as you. We even voted on it.
Ma'am Chair, I'll move the Select Board accept all consent items.
Okay, I have a motion, second, and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now the approval of the minutes, the open session minutes of November 3rd, 2025. Has everybody had a chance to check it out? Okay. I'll take.
I'll move that the Select Board approve the open session minutes of August 14th, 2025, as presented.
November 3rd, I'm sorry.
That doesn't, yeah. November.
November 3rd.
November 3rd.
Move that the Select Board approve the open session minutes of November 3rd, 2025, as presented.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Select Board updates. Anybody?
Happy Thanksgiving. That's all I got. Santa Parade.
You can talk about all of the festivities in your update, or should we?
Some of them.
Okay.
Some of them.
Oh, the upcoming.
No, that's okay.
No, no, you should do the Santa Parade and all the other fun things.
There are a lot of things coming up. Their Merchants Association has the gingerbread lock coming up on December 5th and 6th, I think, whatever the Friday and Saturday is. Friday night is a ticketed event for adults, and Saturday is a free-for-all for the community. There's no fee to get into that, and you'd be able to purchase tickets, and there'll be crafts and snacks, and it's really fun. Last year was the first year we did it in that venue, and it was really successful. It's a really nice community event, and it's an opportunity to showcase your gingerbread talents, but they don't have to be gingerbread houses. It can be anything gingerbread adjacent. I will not, like, we have people make pillows or whatever it is, gingerbread adjacent.
It's at the Stevens?
It's at the Stevens Estate, yep, so. But we're especially excited about the Friday night event.
It's a Christmasy-type place.
Yeah, it's really nicely decorated. It just was a really nice venue for that. It felt very festive. There's some entertainment during the daytime, so there'll be music at the event on Friday night. So buy your tickets and come. Okay, and then the town events would be the Santa Parade on Saturday, November 29th at noon, beginning at the middle school, down to Sutton Street, as usual. Looking forward to it. The Christmas tree lighting will be on Sunday, the 30th, from 4:00 to 6:00. The tree lighting will actually happen at 5:00, which used to be a big mystery. I really like that we actually talk about now when the tree lighting, when the lighting will happen. And then the menorah lighting, is this the correct date? Sunday, November 21st? I feel like we went through this before. Do you have any information? It says Sunday, November 21st. Is that? I don't think that's right.
Doesn't sound right, but I'm not sure.
That's this week, yes.
21st is Friday.
Yeah, that's this week. So that is, so there will be a menorah lighting, but I'm uncertain of the date.
I think it is early this year.
Didn't we already, didn't we already vote on it?
Yeah, but.
Yeah, if we can find out.
Well, there's two different dates on this. Oh, dear, it's not helpful, that's not good.
Okay.
Could be December 18th.
Okay.
Which would make more sense, because last year it was the 11th.
Okay. So probably December 18th. But we'll, yeah, we'll make sure it gets pushed up.
According to the website, December 18th, 5:30 to 7:30.
On the Chiva.
I was wanting to see on the Chiva website, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So December 18th.
Thursday, December 18th.
We did approve this back in August. Actually, this kind of makes sense, because in our August minutes time machine, we would have, we had them, we would have known exactly when the menorah was going to be lit. We voted on it that night. That's why August is in your head.
Oh, that's funny, that's exactly what.
So it says, so they, the Festival Committee requested the 14th to the 21st.
Okay.
For the menorah.
Because they probably didn't know exactly when it was, yeah, okay. Well, because it's up for the whole, the whole time.
I take that back. I don't know, because of the banner here references 2014, so this week be.
Yeah, this is definitely.
We will put the date out there when it's.
Yeah, 21st for a community celebration, so that makes sense.
21st. Perfect. Thank you. Thank you for checking. Okay. That is all I have, so.
You should talk about the locations for food donations.
Oh, okay. We can mention again that there are take and leave bins around town. They have actually been very successful, and I'm appreciative to everybody who is helping to manage them, including our Town Hall staff and Senior Center staff. So the bins are available at the Senior Center. That one is 24/7. Town Hall, when Town Hall doors are open, at the police station, which you can go to 24/7.
You can even stay overnight if you want.
You could. It's not very comfortable, but. And then also at the Historical Society outside. So I have checked in on all of them at various times, and there's definitely a lot of things coming and going from the bins. So thank you to the community who's donating and.
And don't be shy if you really need it.
Yeah, absolutely, so. So, and again, thanks to everybody who's put the effort in to make it happen, because it's sort of, it requires constant management, so.
And Laurie has done some work on that. She was stacking and moving and, so now you could work at a grocery store if you really wanted to. We don't want you to do that. You'd be way overqualified. You have many skills.
Anyone have anything else? Just handing it over to you.
Yeah, so December 14th at the Stevens Estate, the Festival Committee is having their cookies and crafts with Santa. I think it's the first year of that.
They're doing, they're doing the.
I believe, I thought it was at the Stevens Estate.
Okay.
I couldn't make it out, but I thought, so. I'm pretty sure. Yes, 1:30 to 4:30.
That's great.
So that's going to be big fun. We're all excited about that. Krammer Cruiser starts up this week as well, so that's, well, we still have two weeks.